Call the regular city council meeting. It's City Hall to order 7:00 PM on this July 17, 2018. At this time, I would ask for a 15-minute recess to move the meeting due to the fact that we don't have adequate space. I would like to move it to the Library, Community Hall.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries 4-0. Call the regular meeting back to order at 7:15 in the Community Hall of the Idolon Goodman Memorial Library. This is the City of St. John's City Council meeting. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? I would request or entertain a motion for a five-minute executive session to discuss non-elected personnel regarding police department personnel.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Kristian Sanders. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries 4-0. We will do that down with the executive sessions. Okay, at this time, on the agenda, we're going to move to the budget to discuss that as we do have Melissa with Adams, Brown, Barron, and Ball here present. And she's traveling in, and we would like to get her taken care of with the city budget, and then we'll move along with the meeting. You should be getting a copy of that, and you're free to take the microphone.
I appreciate you putting me at the front. The only change, we've had a prior discussion. Nothing has been voted on or approved on when we're working this up yet. We did have a motion to make one change at our last discussion, and Jamie has made that change on that water and light fund to build in just a little bit of a cushion so we don't have to worry about having to amend the budget later and save publication costs on that. Other than that, the budget is prepared in the same accordance that we had discussed the previous week. Jamie just thought it would be better if I was here in person to address questions since we were having trouble hearing each other over the phone our last conversation. So basically, tonight is to determine whether you're okay with how the budget is drafted to move towards publication so that way you can have your budget hearing to do the official hearing and then approval of the 2019 budget. So I guess at this point, I'm just asking if you guys have any further questions from me that we want to review in detail that we didn't cover the night before the previous discussion.
Counsel, do you have your questions ready?
What was the total that we put in there in the water and light?
Basically, what we did in order to avoid a potential need to amend the water and light fund, we budgeted in a miscellaneous income of $100,000, and then we budgeted $100,000 expense, knowing that we don't intend to spend that $100,000. But it gives you that authority in the event some additional revenue comes in and you need to make those repairs within your system. It saves the need to amend the budget and saves some publication costs in the future that way. So now, if you spend above and beyond what is budgeted, obviously, we would have to look at trying to do a budget amendment if you have excess revenue coming over what we've got here.
More thoughts from counsel?
Jamie, whenever we were discussing at the last meeting about if the wages came out of the department that they're in, were there any changes we needed to do for this meeting?
We discussed to maybe look at that next year because of the changes. We did talk about some of the changes within the general fund and just the way that they were sitting, and I made the decision to not change around those numbers because it's in the general fund, so basically, I'm just changing the numbers in the line. But it's all the general fund, so it's gonna play out to be where it's, I don't want to say not matter, but the money is gonna be there budgeted-wise. So I don't, I mean, moving forward, when we do take a look at all of that, that's definitely something that we'll be looking at, but I didn't feel necessary for us to not.
Pretty much needing more time to be able to sit down and go through that.
And figure out what department it's in.
Correct. When it comes into looking at budget violations, you look at the total expenditures budget per fund, not the individual line items within each fund. So if there's some movement within the fund, that's fine as long as we do not exceed that goal that was budgeted. So like you said, if you have some, an administration that should be down in support services or something like that, you can kind of, as long as it's within the funds, you can kind of borrow from that line item to cover if we didn't quite get it within the same right line item.
Wasn't there an issue with the library line item too? You know what we're talking about? Make a change?
When Melissa and I were going through it, she had someone else with Adams, Brown, Barron, and Ball double-check everything, and Melissa and I just forgot a step with the library, and we just had to go and change.
With the tax levy lid, there's a special calculation from the library. You basically pull the library out, figure out what your levy limitation, your lid cap is, and then you add the library's needs back into it. So I didn't have that calculation. I was off a couple hundred dollars on there on the inflation calculation on that. So I had adjusted that. You had the updated numbers in the last meeting already for that.
And then that does qualify the library for that grant, so that is still where it says yes.
Other questions or comments, concerns with the budget in front of you?
I mean, you're kind of the one that understands the budget best of anybody up here. What do you recommend as far as for this coming budget here? I mean, what's your advice?
Well, you're kind of limited on what you can do. You can't obviously increase your levy at this point because you have to take it to a public vote to do an increase in tax levels because the state of Kansas has the tax lid in place. So it's not just a matter of having council to pass a resolution like it was two years ago. Now the state has that lid in place, so we go through the computation. You get increases based upon change in use of property within your taxing area, and then new property, new additions or improvements to the area, and then you get an increase for inflation. What we have done is maximize, we set the budget to maximize the total dollars that you're allowed to spend.
But that's just the budget, not the cash flow.
On the tax levy?
Correct, on the tax levy, yes.
In the future, I know you've already done it for this year, but instead of increasing the budget just because we can, I would like to see the tax levies stay, I may be the only one, but myself, I'd like to see the tax levy stay the same. And then other budget increases we can do by services, i.e. water, sewer, et cetera, instead of adding to the ad valorem tax. So if you keep the numbers the same, you will reduce the mill levy if you have the Property Act.
Right. And that's still a possibility because you haven't published this budget yet. We're not approving the final budget tonight. We're just getting it ready for the publication to do the hearing. So if that's the consensus of the direction that you're wanting to go, I can work with Jamie and get those changes made. We just have to get those made by noon on Thursday in order to get it published.
It was my choice. I think it's the only one.
If you flip to page 18 on your copy of the budget, you actually did not increase a lot mill levy twice. Last year, you were at 63.625 mill.
$6,000 and some odd dollars extra.
Right. And that's the inflation rate. So I mean, if we want to back that off, Jamie and I can certainly work together and get those changes made.
My point is, just because you can, do we need to?
Right. And that's your guys' decision, not mine.
I do have a question for that. Like, you said to increase it with like rates and stuff. I mean, my, not that my opinion matters, but I feel like we need to do our rate analysis before.
I think you're probably right, and that's why I'm saying not for this year.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I know why you went this way this year, and I think, I think you're on right.
I think once we get a better plan, yeah.
In the future, you could do rate increases. That way, the people that consume the services pay more, and it doesn't all go to ad valorem taxes.
So we can look at that in the coming years.
Other discussions at this time? Any other questions?
Do we need a consensus to vote for Adam?
No, not at this point. You don't have to actually vote. We just needed a general consensus that they're okay with the wage draft, and they'll do their official vote on the next meeting on that. The one thing that you need to make a change on is go in on your budget summary page, put the date of your meeting in there, and then go ahead and get that page sent off to your publisher, your paper. Is it the St. John News, I don't even know if it's the same. So just get it to by noon on Thursday at that point.
So do I have a consensus that we're okay to move forward at this time with everyone?
I'm in for it.
Yep, we're forward.
Okay. You have your answer, Jamie. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
If you guys have any other questions.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, citizens' comments. Just a quick reminder to everyone out there, we do have a limit of three minutes per city code, per person. One opportunity to speak. You can use as much or as little as your three minutes as possible, but obviously, we need to allow everyone that has signed up here the opportunity to speak at this time. So we're gonna go down the list as people signed up, and we will proceed. I do ask, you know, I know there are some concerns, and I have a pretty darn good idea what they are, but I would ask to remain as respectful and professional as you can as we are in a business meeting here. And I would call first Brenda Heine on the list.
As a citizen of St. John, I like, and like many others, I am concerned about multiple reasons. As for the city website under the pages, council members, the majority of you have stated that you want a better city, better economy, better future, and want better communication between you and council and as citizens. Here we are, let's communicate. Six to eight months ago, you did not want the police department, and here we are with one officer. What is your next course of action? How will this benefit anyone? Who wants to move to a town with one officer or no PD? Who wants to bring businesses to town? Will a new grocery store still come in? What about the pharmacy? Families and businesses will leave town. What do you have against Chief Adam Saylor? Many of you council members, city clerks, spouses, and close friends have posted on social media that we need to believe or trust in you, the council, and educate and inform oneself of the matter, that you are the bigger and better plans and bright future in store for us. What are those plans, as you clearly haven't shared with the general population here in the town? What do you have up your sleeve? Please share your facts and communicate with us. The chief was told how to run his department, and anytime Chief Saylor brought a matter to the council, he was handed as to where he could barely get anything approved. I am surprised you approved one case for the patrol car for your officer's protection two weeks ago. Thank you. Safety is crucial to their job, but Jeff Williamson doesn't have to fight for what he needs or wants for his department, so why does the police department have to? Word on the street and Facebook, is it you, the council, think Adam was a bad leader, right, Esaie? Yet Sergeant Rudy was on the department for well over a decade, and Officer Brown over eight years, both saying they left because of council dictating. You were right, bad leaders. You just haven't looked in the mirror. As far as we know, there have been complaints about Chief Saylor, have been no complaints about Chief Saylor, and if so, why wouldn't you put him on probation? Honestly, you've kept Jeff Williamson around when he has cost us close to $15,000. Jeff should be the one gone for his grocery store mistake. Why isn't he? Some of you were right when you mentioned that you were voted into your positions. We voted you in to represent us and not our own personal agendas. Therefore, we voted you in. We can and will vote you out with a recall petition. Thank you.
Let the record show that Brenda has yielded her time back there of a minute. Next on our list, Jared Taylor, please.
Good evening. My name is Jared Taylor, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the council here this evening. Executive sessions. From what I understand, they're to discuss real property acquisition, attorney-client privilege, and in this case, personnel matters. And also, what I understand is that the content of an executive session meeting is deemed confidential to protect all parties involved in the meeting. So by law, the content of these meetings cannot be disclosed. So that being said, sometimes we as citizens have more questions than answers, and I think that's probably the case here. But the fact is, we don't have the facts, nor will we. Our governing board is comprised of elected officials. We put them there to make decisions based on our behalf, even when we don't know all of the details of the decision. So if you're dissatisfied with a particular outcome with a vote or the way something was handled, the great news is, you can make it right in the voting booth. Speculation and media syceruses do nothing but bring negativity and doesn't really make anything right. For example, announcing that we're down to one officer to half the state of Kansas doesn't exactly bode well for officer safety, and I think we can all agree on that. In addition, I'm saddened that a member of our governing board would give his personal opinion on a matter that took place in an executive session to any media, nonetheless, television. In closing, I want to thank Officer Bill Elliott for his commitment to serving on our community and to the Stafford County Sheriff's Office for assisting him. I wish Chief Adam Saylor the best in his future endeavors. And to the governing body of St. John, Kansas, to our fire chief, thank all of you in these positions of authority in our, in our community. Thank you so much for your service.
Jared used two minutes there. And next on our list for this evening, in citizens' comments, Jay Riddle. Jay?
Well, everybody's saying everything that I was gonna say, but I don't want to waste my time. I know we don't understand, the public doesn't understand exactly what's going on. We thought we had this resolved six months ago with disbanding the police, and now all of a sudden, we're down to one officer. There's, we just don't understand what's going on, and it's, it seems like a personal vendetta against Adam Saylor. We don't understand what's going on. We would like to understand what's going on, but it's just pinpointing down to that. There's other issues I wanted to talk about also, but like, the scuttlebutt around town is that they're gonna close Fifth Street and because of trucks and the truck routing in town and people stopping trucks and telling them they can't drive down a certain street, and that's elected officials that's been doing that. So I just, as citizens, or put you guys in office, well, four out of the five were elected officials. One's nominated or appointed, whatever you call it. But we were in the understanding that the city council was supposed to be our voice, and it just doesn't seem like our voice is being heard. And I just don't understand how, just like six months ago, when it was all in here, I mean, there was over 100 people, and we all voiced our opinion. We changed that, but then it turned around, it seemed like soon as it cooled down, it's right back to the same thing. It's like, we're not being heard. And everybody in town's upset over this and mad about this because there's no given reason that we know of, and we don't understand what the situation is. And we can't get behind you unless we do know what the situation is. We want to follow behind the city council, but nobody gave a reason for us to follow. It just looks like we're being ignored, and they just, a free-for-all for whatever the city council decides what they want to do, and to heck with everybody else, and everybody else has got to follow along through it. So I guess that, I guess I used my time.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, next on our list this evening, Chelsea Beisner. Is it Beisner? Okay, thank you.
I'm speaking today as a concerned citizen of the community. I'm speaking out because I feel someone needs to say something. Someone needs to stand up. While the masses are laying low, silencing their own voices, or hiding behind keyboards, paying Facebook police attacking others for those opinions, someone needs to demand truth and honesty. That's all I want. That's all I believe anyone wants. I understand executive sessions are confidential, but there has to be a statement that can be collected and provided to the public, something more than personnel matters. To concerned citizens, it sounds like, A, there was a personal vendetta, or B, that our opinions don't matter. And I'm not sure which of these is more concerning at the moment. The citizens of the town chose you, council members, to be our voice. Yes, you are a citizen too, but you serve a greater purpose than your own agenda. We want to know, we want you to know, that this is not what we wanted. We thought we got our point across the last time. I'm not sure what else you want. Do we need to attend every single meeting? Do we need to keep better tabs on those that we instilled our trust in to serve our community with integrity? I am not one to be vindictive, and I'm not running a lynch mob. I'm just coming, I'm not even coming from a place of hatred, instead of coming from a place of hurt and disappointment. It doesn't make our town look well when we choose to eliminate those that have dedicated so much of their lives to it. We simply want answers. We want you to give us a legitimate reason why this whole situation had to happen, and all of this would go away. You're making it worse by saying there's no comment. I know none of you on a personal level, so for me, this is strictly coming from a place of concern. I need to feel comfortable that the fact that I brought my family here is a good place and that it is safe. I need to know that raising my children here was the best choice for our family. The whole situation is a little disheartening, and it draws a dark cloud over the judgments that I have for this community. I'm not on one side or the other, I just call it how I see it. And how I see it was that a good man was ran out of a career in a town for no reason. This has to be one of the most unprofessional acts that could have been done, and I feel like it was a disservice to our community and needs to be reevaluated. Next, I want to address the citizens of St. John. We need to be aware of this situation, and I feel like when it's time to elect officials, we need to take a longer look at who we put in charge. Also, as a mother who is trying to be a good Christian example for my kids, I ask that if you have an opinion, by all means, share it. However, not every statement needs a rebuttal. Both parties have had their fair share of challenging remarks that are unbecoming of grown adults. We need to show our children there are ways to handle this that does not involve attacking one another. As Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Hate does not drive out hate, only love can do that."
Next on our list is Wendy Welch.
As you know, this hits my heart very deeply. I don't know what Adam or Aaron Rudy did to you guys to have such a personal vendetta, and that's really the way I feel about it. As Adam's mother, he has been one of the most honest, has the most integrity, and honorable man. He's a God-fearing man, and he will not be bought. You cannot buy my son. And I know, I think some of you have tried on this council to buy him, and he won't do it. So I'm happy that now he can pursue his career, going in another direction, and taking his family out of this community, that one community that the people love him, that the council has a grudge against him. And I wish you guys all the best, and I hope that in your future, you don't have to move on because of your job being just wiped out. And I don't know why you blew us off six months ago. We asked you guys, we stood up here as a community, as a community, and you blew us off when we told you how we wanted this to happen, that we wanted to keep our police department, and you guys blew us off. I don't know what else we can do. I'd like to have answers. I'm done.
Okay, next on our list, Pat Welch.
In my person, in my personal opinion, I think this council has a vendetta against the police department, always has. We stood here, I'd say, six months ago or eight months ago, and police department was to be four people, four officers, and one part-time. And what do we have now? One, I think we have personal vendettas. People have received citations that they didn't like. I think we should be looking at some council members and asking to resign because they're on a personal vendetta. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, next on our list, we have Misty Newell, please.
Hello, I'm Misty Newell, a citizen of St. John for 43 years. How many of you are here today because of what you've seen on Facebook, social media, or our lovely news station? Okay, there are quite a few hands that one of us you can see. So I went the other route. I went to some of the council members, some of you guys that are up here right now, and I asked the facts. I feel like if the news media wants to come into our town, it would be great for them to come in like they did for Dean Wade, to see how we rallied up the community to support Dean Wade. Why does the community need to go to the news media and have them post all over Great Bend, Hutchinson, or other communities about what's going on in our town regarding our police department? Are they gonna come to St. John and buy any groceries here? Are they gonna come to St. John and support St. John? No. So what was the whole point behind that? I don't get it. So I think you know where I'm going with that. I want to tell you that I said I went to these guys and I asked the facts. So here's what I got. An executive session. It's a session that's held to discuss certain privacy issues. So basically, it's done in privacy, that is also known as HIPAA. And a lot of you guys that are in your own departments know what HIPAA is. It means it's a client-personnel situation that happens to protect their privacy and your guys' privacy. That's what it is. Basically, no decisions are made, it's only a discussion. A special meeting. Nothing can be discussed or voted on in a special meeting that wasn't posted on the agenda before the meeting. So with these two things in mind, really, only seven people know the whole story. The five councilmen, Adam, and the attorney, the city attorney. So why do we hear things as there's a certain three people that want to vote, that voted them out? Why do we hear situations like that? It wasn't even voted on. Why do we have, in most of our meetings, in city council, five or less people from the community coming to them? Why are there five or less people showing up to voice their concerns? I'm hearing today from some of the people that spoke up here that they want to know what's going on in the community. Then why don't we come? Why don't we support our councilmen more? This isn't a new thing, it's been an ongoing thing. I have talked to some of the councilmen about if they want the police department. It's a general consensus that they do want a police department, and I feel that they will get us back up and going again, hopefully, soon. I don't feel any less safe today than I felt two weeks ago. I made a comment to several people over the weekend. I took out and drove around town. On Saturday, two different times, I seen three different sheriff's officers in our community, and each time, I saw the one police officer. To me, that's kind of impressive. To me, that's kind of impressive.
Misty, you are out of time, I'm sorry.
All right, that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, that is due to the three minutes per person rule, I just want to make that clear. Next on our list, we have Richard Blakesley.
I got in really late tonight and have much time to prepare this and I had lots that I wanted to say and I don't know that I'll get it all said because it's only three minutes and there's lots to say, but at the end of the day, as a community, you guys were voted in. Two of you own businesses, one of you works for an important business, one of you works at the school, but for the two guys that own businesses, I don't think that you're up here, I don't think any of you are up here with a personal vendetta, trying to, you know, take anybody's job or get away with anybody's job. That could affect your livelihoods. I mean, I think you come up here each week and you try to make the best decisions that you can for the best of our community. I don't think it's good that one of the council members was talking, and I voted for this council member each time he's been in, and I don't think it's good that, that individual was on the news talking about things that go on in executive session. I think what goes on behind closed doors remains behind closed doors. As far as the police department goes, again, I said this before, I think it's very important that we have a police department. I own multiple properties in town, I own several businesses in town. So we need our stuff looked after, we need somebody around town, we need people around town to take a look at things and, and, you know, look after our children at the school. We, we need all of that. I mean, there's no doubt that we need all of that. I, I think everybody comes in here tonight with a heavy heart. You know, local, small-town boy is our police chief, he has a family here, you know, I think everyone in the room is, that's a major thing for everyone in the room. Adam is a, and Adam and I have had our disagreements, we, we've openly discussed our disagreements. You know, he comes from a small town and, and he's got a family here and I think people come here with a heavy heart and they want to know what's going on, but at the end of the day, I think that you guys have choices to make and decisions to make that really, honestly, the rest of us have no idea why you made the choices you made, what is behind that. It's between you, it's between Adam, it's between Aaron, it's, it's between you and the police department. And I feel like as long as you're going to do what you can as a community, you know, city council group, core group, to get us a police department going again, that's all we can ask for. I mean, you've made your decisions and we've got to accept that and move forward and hopefully you guys will do the best to get us back on track.
Next on our list, I have Michelle Ross.
Can I just say from over here, is that okay? Okay, I just want to thank you all so much for letting me join in this meeting. I'll be here after the meeting as well and I'm open to hear both sides, whatever people feel comfortable with, you know, camera, but thank you all so much for letting me be here.
Okay, we're trying to read handwriting here. Is this Sharon Grove?
That should be well-known by now since I get a letter from the attorney. I would like first to comment or compliment those who care enough about our, our city to improve the square. We've got various properties that have now been updated, one is the laundry mat, makes a big difference. But what can be done now to improve the rest of the square? Some of these places are in absolute disgrace, we know it, you know it, it's hurting the town, it's time something to be done. Now, the other thing, and you've been fully spanked, so I agree with them, since we now are going to need another chief of police, it's obvious, why not get somebody that we know is highly respected by the older generation and the younger generation? He's, he's been groomed, he needs to be called back. Many of us would like to see Charlie Brown called and we recommend that you consider that when you're looking for a new chief of police because he has, he has the respect of the community and he's proved himself already.
Okay, next on our list, we have Eric Riegel.
The decisions you've made is, no, we're not going to change anything talking to you here today, but I don't think Charlie's going to come back, but we also, we have a small hometown boy here that could fill the shoes maybe, and I'd like you guys to kick that around instead of hiring somebody from Wichita to come in and train what we already have. Let's get this guy the chance to run with it. Thanks.
Next on our list, we have Ray Davidson.
Good evening. Couple of months ago, I became very disappointed in an action that city council took concerning Jeff and the electrical situation out at the grocery store. A person spoke, made accusations, executive session was held, executive session ended, and a vote was taken to dismiss Jeff from the job that he was doing. I don't know why that decision was taken, but the person that spoken was immediately hired to be the contractor and the next morning, his crew was at work. I'm disappointed in the fact that, once again, we have executive sessions. I don't know if there's personal vendettas, I don't know anything. But I was told, and I don't know by whom, it was not Mark, I will say that because I have not talked to Mark about this situation, although I wanted to. But I was told that in the executive session, Adam was asked for his resignation and he immediately gave it. Because I looked at the video from last week and I saw the committee or the council go into about 45 minutes of executive session. And there was no vote taken at that point in time or no request made after y'all came out of executive session that Adam would resign. If you have an issue with our people, whether it be Jeff, whether it be Chief Sanders, or any of the others that you are supervising, please take time to hear all sides of the story. And I would be very reluctant if I was a police officer or another individual, I would be very reluctant to come and seek to have a position under you, gentlemen. Because you are the supervisors, you have an issue. I would be reluctant to come because I don't know if you're going to treat me the same way that you treated others. And so I just share with you my disappointment. I respect you as council members and where you're at.
Ray, your time is up.
And you make decisions. Thank you.
Next on our list, we have Derek Wentz.
Okay, first of all, when we had to sign in, we had to sign in our name, address, and phone number. Why don't you guys list all your names, addresses, and phone numbers and toward it's readily available to everyone? Hey, when I first moved to this town, my first impression is a quaint little town, real nice, the square was nice, and it's gone to shit real quick. I mean, it's gone downhill. I'm at the square, I've complained, I don't know how many times about, I found weeds this tall growing out of the sidewalks going around the square and, but they'll go around and write people up for having their grass too tall or something like that. And you'd think they'd work on the square first, that's most important. I mean, if there's, on the square, places need to be painted, you get volunteerism. Has anyone volunteered? Would any of you volunteer? You'll volunteer.
I have multiple times.
I know you won't, and you won't, because you got your arms crossed, body language. But, you know, when I first moved here, I come across all sorts of stuff. First of all, another thing I wanted to ask you is, is this town designated as a non-sanctuary city? I called up and asked that and they couldn't give me an answer. They go, well, we'll have to check. What does that tell me? You know, when they were doing the census, they come around and wanted to know, I got to talking to the lady who was taking the census and I was telling her about all the illegals, if she counts all those, and she said that there was a house in town that had 12 illegals living in it at the time and nothing was done. She couldn't turn it in because it's not her job. So what's this place going to? And, let's see, what else? Then the officers, when I first moved here, we had Sonny going around with a cigar that basically didn't do much, anything. And you had the other two officers that, they're no longer here anymore. And I heard from the kids down at the square, they were telling me, yeah, he took a joint from us and smoked it in front of us and it made him mad. A cop did that. Another officer in town, his wife, and everyone in town knew it because I heard it from so many people in town. In fact, I even talked to a guy that teenagers were having sex with his wife. And this stuff went on, the city council didn't do anything. I know city council's different now, but, yeah, you guys need to get your act together. I mean, I live out of town. I moved out of town because I got tired of this. I talked to so many people, they're just sick and tired of this town just because city council trying to micromanage and everything. I mean, I've, I've heard complaints about everything. I mean, you did real good with that.
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
Okay, nevermind.
Jamie, is there any information on our page for people to contact us, our phone number?
There sure is, and I have a volunteer list, too.
Yeah? Keep me informed.
The information, I just want to make that real clear, real quick, that city council information is available on the city's website, which, which what you pay, which is what you pay for. And it is there, it is listed there. Mayor, council members, the address, the phone number, it's all supposed to be there. So I welcome you to check that out. Okay, we'll continue citizens' comments here. Kellyanne Newman is on our list next, please.
Hi, I'm fairly new to this town. I moved here about 12 years ago and it's a very quaint little town. I felt that it was a really nice place to start a family. I have a special needs child and she is very well-known throughout the school. A lot of people know her, Gabby. I'm very concerned as a citizen of this town that being down to one officer is not safe for our children at this time. I'm wondering if you had plans to get rid of or force a fire, quit, however you want to say it, chief, you know, why wasn't there someone as an option already available instead of leaving us with only one officer and leaving us open to having things happen to our children and having things happen on our street? I don't think it's fair to the citizens of St. John. I really feel that you need to advocate for us as citizens and I don't know about personal vendettas, I don't know about any of that stuff. I know what's rumored, but I can hope that that's not the case. But if it is, something needs to be done. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the last person on our list here is Ron Scott. Just a quick reminder to everyone here, citizens' comments is now over. We are going to finish our business here. You are more than welcome to attend the meeting, but your ask not to speak is that is the format and that's how we do things. If you have any other further questions about that, why that is, I'm sure anyone would be willing to answer those questions for you, but I just wanted to address that so you know. We will not be entertaining any comments from the crowd as that is regular business, please. Moving on, consent agenda to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting, June 3rd, 2018, and special meeting July 10, 2018. Appropriation ordinance 07-17-18 and the amount of $71,175.10. Do I hear a motion? Motion and a second. Doran and Christie, any other discussion? All in favor? All of those carries five of them. Moving on to our department head and committee reports. Grant administrator Lisa Cornwall, is there a report?
I have been working with Lisa. I think next, we'll put it off till next meeting, but Sid's going to come down and we're going to discuss a few things. When Lisa and I sat down, we discussed one of the grants from the park or something, a bench, a bench or two hadn't been bought, so we're going to get that going. I sent that to David, I think yesterday, we discussed it today, so that should be able to be finalized and move forward on further projects.
Anything else from Lisa? Anything for Jamie to ask Lisa about?
I think she brought up something, what's, what ended up being the grant for Fifth Street out here by the grocery store? Did, nothing?
She hasn't come with anything and the last time she updated me on it, she said we don't have any good news on it, so.
Just waiting.
I don't know if it's even a waiting game, it just doesn't look.
I don't think there's any funds available, the way she explained it to me. I think she's still checking on it. Yeah, it wasn't looking very good.
Okay, moving on, department head committee reports, police report. At this time, I would like to let council know that I've been working with Officer Elliott to make sure that the town is adequately covered, working on his schedule with him and making sure things are taken care of in that respect to officially update you. You got your mics? It must be that mic, Jared, I'm sorry. That's what happens when a, when an open mic gets left open there, sorry about that. But as far as I did have a meeting with the sheriff and under sheriff and they did let me know that they are more than willing and going to help us out and make sure everything is coordinated well with Bill to take care of our city and allow him to get some time off and things like that as well. So if you have any questions for me, I would certainly entertain those at any time. And that's all I have at this time.
I just wanted to thank, I've talked to Bill each day since our last meeting and he's done a really great job and I hope some of you stop by and tell him thank you. He spent lots of hours out on the road. Thank you. And thanks to the sheriff's department for willing to step up and help us. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, moving on, fire chief. Okay, what?
Bill. Bill, here the other day, you were on the street and a citizen and sent me a message saying that they wanted to thank you for yelling. saying that they wanted to thank you for yelling at them to put their seatbelt on. That they were embarrassed, they felt guilty, and they said they immediately put it on, and they just wanted to make sure that you understood that they really, they thought that was really good. So thank you from them.
I believe it was the story that I had been informed about where you were working your way into City Hall, and this person was going by, and you hollered out, "Seatbelt, please", or something to that effect, and they almost ran the stop sign trying to put their seatbelt on, so thank you for doing a good job. Okay, moving on at this time, Fire Chief Sanders' report.
Oh, I'm good.
Thank you. Moving on, City Clerk Jamie Getty.
You're not that lucky with me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just an update on the car show. I think Pam has everything in line for that, August 25. And I am still working on trying to get breweries to town, so hopefully our microbrew tasting event will happen. I do want to point out to everyone that I do take volunteers, if you guys would like to sign up. I'm all about fixing up the square and painting buildings, but again, that's personal property, so I'm working on that. But I do have a sign up list, and those projects are underway. And I think that's it.
Any questions for Jamie?
That's it. What is the public hearing for the budget?
Jamie, what would the public hearing date on the budget be?
I will publish it in the newspaper on, well, I have to turn it in Thursday. It will be published next Wednesday, and then we'll have the hearing August 7.
Anything else for Jamie at this time?
This is a preliminary debate to city business, but I think it's the 25th of July. There is a budget hearing at Doris Topkin's house on the St. John Hospital District Found St. John Hospital District, which has $188,000 laying in cash. As far as I'm know, nothing has been done with it since the hospital closed, and it's just still sitting there. And that's money that could be returned to the townships from which it was taxed. I would urge people to go to that meeting and ask what's going on.
Anything else for Jamie?
It was it was published in, yeah, you could probably.
Grab another one, please.
I don't need that one.
Okay. Very good. It's really hard with sound, of course, when you have this many microphones in one place. These aren't top quality. We were trying to watch the budget when we bought these, so that that happens. I'm sorry about that. Thank you for putting up with that, I'm sorry. Okay, moving on, City Superintendent Jeff Williamson.
The only thing I have is that last meeting, you asked me about revenue from last year to this year. Revenue, I can't exactly tell you because I look at the wholesale end, not the retail end. But what I can tell you is, as of the 1st of June this year compared to last year, we've sold a half a million more kilowatts. Now, our bills from Midwest Energy are behind about 35 to 40 days, so that's as far up as I can get you, but, you know, we've had, we've had a pretty good month, so I think we're going to be ahead for some this year. Now, on the water end, I can't tell you, that comes out of Jamie's office, so, but from my aspect, the kilowatts are up usage-wise. The only other thing is, we've got all the wire pulled at the grocery store. We've got most of it terminated. We're waiting on the contractor to lay a drainage ditch out to the ditch in front of Kansas Dirt so that we can set the last transformer. You know, as soon as it's done, in a week's time, we'll be ready to energize all of it. So big transformer's set, we're waiting on the electricians. It's ready to energize, it's been energized once, and will be as soon as they're ready inside for it. So other than that, we've, that's about all we've done.
Does that drainage for surface runoff out there?
It's a holding pond of source. Yeah, the state, from the way that the general contractor explained to me, the state would not allow them to drain that much surface water at one time, so it has to go into a retention pond, and then from there come on out. Oh, I can tell you one other thing, though. We discussed the road on Southwest Street. I met with Phil Nestor this morning, Road Supervisor. Phil told me that he would not recommend what the city should do on that street, that if, if you wanted recommendations, that we probably should hire an engineer if you wanted to. He's more than welcome, more than interested and welcome to, to help us haul in rock and get the road built up and do some of that, but as far as shooting the levels on the drainage, he'll give us, he'll give us the shoot if we want it, or we can shoot it either way, but he's not going to give us any recommendations on how to drain it whatsoever. So he doesn't want to be liable for what he tells you. He's not an engineer, and he, and he doesn't claim to be, so. But he said he would be here next meeting if you had some questions. He was tied up tonight, so.
Have you, do you have a laser level?
Yeah, and I've got a transit, too. I mean, we can shoot it, yeah. Soon as we get down with that grocery store, if you give us just a little bit of time, we'll try and go down there and shoot some stakes. We'll measure some rightaways, we'll see where the rightaways are, just some flags, you know, to kind of give us an idea of how wide that ditch could be. You know, we know how it used to drain. Of course, over the years, that south of the old co-op station's been, the ditch has been farmed in, you know, a lot of that has changed, but we're fairly certain that we can make that water drain to the north. But how much we want to build the road and how much material we want to put into the road to hold the base yet to be determined, so, anyway.
We'll back over here to this Fifth Street out here. I mean, I think we need to do something on that south side of Fifth Street, at least to that second driveway on the west where trucks are going to be pulling in and out. I think we at least should throw rock down.
We've discussed that, the problem we've ran into so far, and if you'll let us get this done, that's another thing on the list. We've set, we've set stakes out there at the ends of that driveway at Hampples. They've been run over numerous amount of times, the culvert's been crushed. The only problem that we have with cutting that ditch is that there's foam cable laying in about half of it, and there's also one sewer line I know that's just barely below the ground. So we get done, we're going to, you know, we're going to try and do what we can, but there's, there's only about two feet of drop between Santa Fe and the highway, and that's minimal. You know, if we can get something set permanent at the Hampple driveway to keep the trucks running over the end of the culvert, you know, we just by, we opened one, we opened, or opened one driveway here a couple, three weeks ago. The resident there had asked it be closed off, that he was tired of people using it for a cut through going into the new work side of the grocery store. So we removed it, that did help the drainage, but the culvert at Hampples is mashed completely down, so it's going to take some time and effort, see how deep we can get it, and then we'll know about what kind of culvert we can put back in it. So we'll help it some, you know, it's not going to be great, but I think we can help it some. So we need to cut it from Santa Fe all the way east. There's no two ways.
Something you're looking at doing the whole, the whole thing, you're looking at like a long-term deal, I was just thinking.
No, I mean, just to get rid, you know, because we got water there at the old VFW I looked at this morning. I mean, but it's just so flat there, there's just no way to get rid of it. And, I mean, we can, we can try and help it, but I'm not sure how great it's going to get. We'll get rid of some of it, we'll try and build the road up some, see if we can get it kicked off to the south.
I mean, concerns is the big trucks in and out, in and out.
Well, and that's a narrow street, see, and by putting that fence up along the grocery store, which they have, it cuts down the amount of area there is to turn those trucks in and out, and I'm sure that didn't help matters any, so. You know, the street's only, only 40 feet wide from north to south, and when they get done with the grocery store, there's going to be curving down along there, and we're going to protect our water can and our transformers and that stuff, so it's not going to be real wide coming out of there, but we'll do the best we can.
You only have a 40-foot rightaway, Jeff?
It's only a 40-foot street. From Santa Fe East, it's only 40 feet, so it's pretty narrow. And with water in there, I understand guys trying to dodge the holes in the mud. I mean, it's like a racetrack out there now anyway, between all the contractors and what goes in and out of Hampples and that stuff, so, you know, it's just not a very good base to work with at all. It's, it's kind of like everything else here, there's too much sand, but.
One of my main things is I don't want to sneak up on us.
We'd love for it to be asphalt. I, I'd give anything for it to be asphalt, but, you know, like I said, we talked to Lisa last week, it's not a very good picture, but.
Yeah, we need to get on some, if you don't feel comfortable with, you know, the engineering process, but it, you know, it either needs to be concrete or asphalt, I believe, because really, concrete would be the best, if trucks turn in there. Asphalt's just temporary.
Yeah. Well, we know that from down at the co-op earlier, when we did that, when we put an apron off that street for those trucks to turn, we didn't make it wide enough. You know, they tried to fill the back up, and they were, asphalt is tore up. If we've got any money left in the budget, in the street budget, by the time we get done with the repairs we're going to do, we're going to try and extend that apron for those trucks. You know, we, we tried to stop those trucks from going down Monroe and Pearl and there, so, you know, when they turn in and out of that street, they beat that street up pretty bad, so we're going to try and extend that concrete back to where those trucks and trailers can get completely turned. Got any money left? You know, I, I don't know. Without, without having an engineer, it wouldn't feel good pouring cement out there, but, you know, some rock in, on the north side of that or, or something to hold it. It gets a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic, so.
I'm just concerned about rock, just the dust from the south wind blowing in the grocery store.
Yeah, yeah. I think, you know, it will depend on the rock we put in. If we use an AB3 base with some clay and stuff like we use in some of these places, like, it won't be near as dusty, and it may pack down in there the clay if we could rip it. Problem is two manhole covers. I mean, the manhole covers, the sewer manhole covers are right up at the dirt. There's nothing to cut there. I mean, the street's been beaten so long that the manholes, if you look driving down through there, every one of them showing, so it's kind of a tough booger to maintain, it really is. So, yeah, we'd love to see it asphalt, in a heartbeat, we really would, so, anyway.
Is it your budget?
Well, we've got, you know, we've got about 65,000 in street maintenance, and about 50 of it goes for asphalt repair and stuff and then sealing, so doesn't leave a lot. But if we've got some room and we've got some rock left, you know, we'll try, between that and West Street, we'll try and get it strung out there, at least if nothing else, like Ryan said, maybe we go and, and he said, hey, if we can go from, from west of that driveway a little ways to the highway, you know, we can eliminate a lot of that. Once the final grade's done at the grocery store, the curb and gutter's done and that stuff, then we'll have a little more idea of what we can do there, how much height we can put on it, and then try and get that ditch pulled back up, see what we can do with the foam cable. Foam cable's the biggest problem, because we'd like to pull that ditch out, and it's just, there's not much room to do it. It's pretty shallow.
Is that Gold, Gold Mill or Century Lane?
No, Century Lane, yeah, it's been in there for a long time. Now, part of it goes out in the road, but I think the original part of it, down in front of the water plant back to the west, is all ended up bottom of that ditch are fairly close. We cut it once before years ago, trying to pull it up, so I don't think it's been moved, but we'll have it all located, we'll see what we got.
Have you surveyed the drop? Is there a two-foot drop?
I haven't had time to set it up out there, but it's not over two foot, I'm sure.
It appears to be about an inch per hundred foot to me, which just does not drain very well.
Yeah, it's pretty fine, so, but as soon as we get this kind of tidied up, we'll get some of that done, and we'll come back with an answer for you and kind of tell you what we find out. We're not engineers, but we can give you, we can give you a measurement, we can tell you what the drop is and that stuff, so.
So as far as back to the grocery store, our end of the deal in the store, I mean, we're pretty well tidying.
We're waiting on them to get the culvert out of the retention pond and get it out to the ditch, because they'd ask us to move the transformer back to the east in order to get that drain through there, and so we've pulled the wire back and left them plenty of room to lay through there, and then we'll, we'll set the transformer once we get done. Then we'll talk to the electricians that are doing Kansas Dirt, and we'll get it plumbed in so we can get tied back up. Transformer's got to be there before we cut it over, because otherwise we'll lose that building. We don't, we don't have any way to serve it, so. We're hoping, you know, I think they were wanting to get it done, but we've had rain off and on, and I think they're a little, I think they're behind, too, so. But as soon as it's done, you know, in a week's time, we'll be able to pour that and set the transformer, we'll be ready, so.
Fire hydrants out there close enough, as far as you know? You haven't been asked to maybe?
You know, the only fire plugs that we have, they're at Fourth Street and at Jimmy Green's. We've not been asked to put any, any closer. We really don't have any place to put one on the east side of that building at all. The rightaway's all taken up with, you know, we got gas, we got six-inch water line, we've got, we got sewer manhole, we've got electricity, we've got all that stuff buried in about a six-foot shoulder on the ditch, so there's really not much room, until we know where the curving and stuff is, and then we might be able to try and put something there. It'd be nice to put something closer than what we have.
Well, not that building required, have a sprinkler system at that size.
I haven't seen one plumbed out yet, but we haven't seen much of the plumbers lately, so can't tell you, but, you know, all the other buildings, well, like the rest of them out here, hasn't hooked up that way. Lodge building does not, of course, it's private, but I'm not sure what the state fire marshal will require, I'm really not.
Mike?
Well, I know some of them are, yeah, we actually have to hook our truck in to pump, so, I mean, it'd be nice to know if they do have one, what kind of ditch, so that we know.
Yeah, maybe we'll, maybe we'll get.
Because that is a long way to landline.
Yeah. Oh, we do have one back to the west end, though, that we've been.
There's one. There's one versus 280, or.
There's one on Fifth Street, too, at the southwest corner of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have one on Fifth Street, sort of like six-inch line.
Okay.
It's about, what, 300 feet?
No, from the southwest corner of the building now, about 100, you know, since everything's out.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what kind of sprinkler system, yeah, I mean.
But I mean, we've got water that close. We haven't been asked to run anything else other than the service line, you know.
Mike, wouldn't a building that size require a sprinkler system?
That's above my pay grade.
Well, just ask the contractor, that's what I would do, as a contractor. If they have a sprinkler system, hydrants are more or less a moot point.
Yeah.
Right, unless you, unless they have a dry one, that we actually have to pump the water through the sprinkler, which I believe is how.
That's how, that's how the rest of them, yeah.
We actually have to pump into it.
Into it, yeah. Yeah, so, but there is a fire plug within 100 feet, so.
I was just asking, maybe we have certain hydrants that don't have good pressure, are those there okay, the ones that are around there? Don't smile.
Those are new, all those out there within 20 years?
I'll have to look back.
Just double-checking, in case.
That's a dead-end line, though, you know, it runs up to Greens and it stops. I mean, that's the north end of our service there, so.
Those are usually the ones we have the least pressure on, but I, I can get you.
I mean, do you have any concerns at all at all getting that, with if we had a fire out there?
No. I mean, we've got three hydrants, we could, I mean, we could hook up two different hydrants if we had to.
Okay.
But I, I can get you the, I can get you what those hydrants have.
Anything else for Jeff? Asked you about all this other street stuff, is there any timeline on as far as First Street? Grind that up?
First of the week. First of the week, they're going to start Monday, yeah.
Can we already make sure we post that to the public so that?
They'll be starting probably at the corner of Monroe and First, I assume, and going, going west, so.
That's going, going west all the way to West Street?
As far as we go with material.
Okay.
Yeah. It takes about three times the material we can afford to get over there, so we're going to go as far as we can, if we've got, then we'll do it again next year, you know, until we get it done, so.
Okay.
They're held up on making material right now because of the rains and stuff, and Philip wasn't sure how long they're going to stay. Sand's wet, they can't get the sand dried out to where they can make any more, so we only end up with a little over 500 tons, so if that's all we get, our season's going to be short. So we're kind of at their mercy as to what they make, you know.
Still pretty similar, six foot on each side.
Yeah, we spoke for 1,000, but, you know, we may only get that 500. We try to go between six and 10, depending on, you know, how bad shape the edges are in, try and get the crown back down to where it was before, so, yeah, yep.
All right, moving on, Department Head Committee reports, moving on to City Attorney. Was there anything that needed to be relayed?
No report, no.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Department Head and Committee reports, Mayor's report. Early at this time, I don't have anything to report, other than I was asked by multiple citizens to have a discussion with Charlie Brown and just ask him where he was at as a citizen, if there were any thoughts, and I, I was pretty much told at this time, there aren't any thoughts regarding maybe potentially coming back. So you guys are certainly welcome to give him a call, community members that have his one member, welcome to give him a call or whatever, but I don't have anything to report back to you on that, and I know at the last meeting I said I would make a call out there based on. make a call out there based on what some people had said, and that way you know what's going on there. The other thing that I had, I just wanted to say thank you to Jamie for coming over with me today and making sure that this setting was set up so that we could move efficiently, effectively, and quickly, so we could conduct business. You know, set up the chair's requested room, got all the sound stuff done, so Jamie and I wanted to make sure you guys had adequate space to conduct this meeting, so I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that as well. At this time, that's all I have. Moving on to old business, discussing the handbook.
You guys will all get an electronic copy of the changes on the handbook. I have one thing I'm waiting on. John asked if I could find different wording on a certain part of it, but as soon as I get that answer, I will send it all electronically. It's going to be pretty large with all of the attachments, because the pay plan's going to be one of the attachments, and that itself is like 40 pages, so if you want a paper copy, I'll be more than happy to print one out, but I'm just going to send...
We will have copies of that available in the office as well.
I'm just going to send it out electronically for right now. I do know that there's some concern that I think...I haven't sat down with Jeff yet, so I'll get that wording, and I need to sit down with Jeff, because I have had some concerns from some of the...it doesn't like me.
It's too close to your computer.
There's some concerns with some of the employees with some issues, so I think going forward, I'm going to sit down with Jeff, and we can discuss those further, and if he feels like we need to address the committee again, we will bring those issues to the committee, and then the committee can bring the full handbook to the full council. That's how I'm going to go forward with that, if that's okay with you guys.
So, you'll have an opportunity to review and potentially take action on at the next meeting pending...that's the time...that's the time that we're going to allow, is two weeks, for them to be able to get their end taken care of, and if they want to address anything, we can do that before, but other than that, we'll take it, make sure you have that reviewed so that we can potentially take action on that at next meeting. I guess if the employees have any concerns, they can contact any one of us, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Before we expose them.
Okay. I had let them know, it's kind of the same concern, and I let them know the discussion around that and tried to communicate that with them, and so I just advised them that they needed to talk to their supervisor about their concern, and Jeff and I would be able to sit down and move forward on it.
Okay. I'll take care of your handbook. Moving on, is roads. Have we covered that through Jeff?
Basically, I called Phil, and he said he would be more than happy to come next meeting, but he would suggest an engineer.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business. Looking at the item that's there, we talked about budget to begin the meeting. The next item of business is acceptance letter of resignation of Adam Saylor. Jamie, do you have that information for me?
Mm-hmm.
A letter here that I have. "Adam Saylor resigned my position as chief of police for the city of St. John effective immediately signed." I'll pass that down for you to review.
Second.
I have a motion to accept the resignation. Seeus and Christie, second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries 4-1. Okay, moving on to the next item on our list here. I would like to entertain, have someone entertain a motion, the one that we had for the additions to the agenda, the five-minute executive session to discuss non-elected personnel regarding the police department personnel. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second.
Motion and a second. Doren and Christie, meeting to reconvene at 8:34. Do you...any other discussion?
Who do you have? Who do you want on?
Oh, excuse me. Counsel, mayor, attorney, and clerk. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
I want to do it again, sorry. Second. Motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carrying 5-0. It will be 8:35 at this time due to that extra moment. We will move...we will move out, so you can stay.
That wouldn't play very good poker either, going on here. And I forgot my glasses tonight. I can't even see what I'm reading on.
Call meeting back to order at 8:35.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to add in acceptance of Aaron Rudy's resignation.
Second.
A motion and a second. Sanders and Doren, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries 5-0. All right, we will discuss. That's the next item. I had an oral resignation from Sergeant Rudy. It was dated, or it was the date of that oral resignation was after a meeting, the 5th of July 2018. Again, that's a personnel matter that was handled between department heads, not council, and in that meeting, we discussed what we needed to discuss, so I am comfortable. I verbally did accept that as the department head over the chief of police, along with them to that extent, so we handled personnel properly, so I would entertain a motion to accept his oral resignation on the date of the 5th of July 2018. So, move.
Set that in.
Motion and a second. Sanders, Macias. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries 5-0. Okay, moving on to the next item on the list, executive session, a 10-minute executive session to discuss employee performance of non-elected personnel to include mayor, council, attorney, and Officer Bill Elliott.
Salute. Second.
Motion and a second. Sanders and Brian. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries 5-0. We will reconvene at 8:38. Sorry. I just want to let you know. We can't. It's the rules.
We get the rules.
We have to wait till the designated time is up.
We have to wait till the designated time is up to start the meeting. We're under 60 seconds.
I don't like the way they...
No action has been taken after the 10-minute executive session. I would like to add, Bill, thank you for the service to the community, and I appreciate you. We've had many conversations on that, so...with no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Doren and Christie, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries 4-1. If I could have...if I could have maybe two councilmen help me.